All right, we'll come back to order. Next item on our agenda is audit presentation and discussion. I'll invite Mr. Cordred to come up and bring Ms. Baker with you. How are you?
Good, good. Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. And I know that I believe you all received copies of the audit report, of the draft audit report last week.
Yeah.
So what we're going to do tonight is I hope to give you an overview. If you did have a chance to read it right after Thanksgiving, I'm sure you did, kept your wake.
Well, to clarify, we didn't get the audit until this afternoon.
Oh, you got this afternoon.
Yeah, we got the management letter and the...
Oh.
We got the audit today.
Okay.
It might have been a heavy cargo failure, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay, well. All right. But you got the single audit, so you got any recommendations. So the numbers we can walk you through. Okay, good, for the numbers we can walk you through. I was gonna say, I think we met our deadline. So I actually, interesting that you brought that up, because I actually did want to start my comments this evening with saying, you know, the first year that we came to the city of Salisbury, there were some very, some large agenda items that were presented to us as independent auditors. And probably first and foremost in that was to get the city to a place where their financial information in their annual audit was done in a more timely fashion, in that it was, met a timeline that was more reasonable for a city the size of Salisbury. And, you know, we took that very seriously, and your administration at the time took that very seriously, and we really worked hard to get to that point. And so now, we seem to be in a pattern where that's good. It's not an agenda item, top agenda item anymore. We've worked it out, there's a schedule, administration understands it, you know, we worked with them to get to that, and so, you know, I think that's great. The other big thing that I think we as independent auditors saw, you know, in those very early years, you know, maybe a little more systemic, below the surface of getting things out timely, you know, was some of the things that we put out there, that we put on the table as maybe big agenda items, you know, it was difficult to effectively get that communicated because it was difficult for administration and some of the staff to kind of understand it and to own it and to really be able to move it forward. And the reason I say all of that is because I feel this year that some of those agenda items, some of those things that we thought were really important, we've really started to see some real change there. And this year, I would be remiss, because your report is here and you're gonna see it's pretty consistent year to year, but there were some really big things that happened this year. Because now, with some of the items and some of the things that we were bringing forth, you know, three, four years ago, we now have staff and we now have the resources in the city that get the theory side, they really get it. And so we're seeing real movement in some of those other areas. One of those items is the financial statements themselves, okay? So the first year we came here, we put tremendous effort into assisting with putting those financials together, and that happened for a few years, and there was a lot that, you know, really needed some additional help to do that. This year, not only has the city produce their own financial statements, and you've done it for, you know, last year, you did it for the most part as well, but this year, your administration, your staff took it one step further and said, "We have a powerful system here, we have an automated system, and we're gonna take that automated system and we're gonna build financial statements." That's financial management, okay? That's not, "We run the budget all year long and then we try to pull it all together." So, I mean, that's a huge plus that you're not going to see just by seeing this, but I can tell you of my clients, you are one of the only clients that I have that have utilized their automated system to build their financial statements. And I think that, you know, Keith and his staff have really, really done a great job there. One of the other things that we talked about early when we became the auditors here, and those of you who were here will remember, I really, every year pointed out the cash overdrafts, and why do we have cash overdrafts? Why do we have big inter-fund do-tos and do-froms? And I know you have pulled cash, but there's a bigger issue here, and that's been another thing that Keith has taken on, and that problem is gone. There is, now, not only are the cash overdrafts gone, but there's real meaning behind what your balance sheets look like. We don't have big inter-fund activity. Inter-fund activity at the end of the year, if it exists, represent temporary borrowings, which it's supposed to do, not, we just didn't get cash allocated. So that's another really big plus that I think this administration has really, and under Keith's leadership, have really brought that around. The deficit fund balances, you know, how many years did we talk about those? Gone. The only one that exists is Mitchell Landing, and that's just because it's the accounting and we know that.
Appreciation, yes.
So this year, when you see reference to that finding, we're done with that, okay? We are done with that. Once again, pull, and it was really kind of taking a step back and having the true management, financial understanding. It wasn't just that it was existing, it was there's a cause. And so, you know, Keith really worked to identify the cause, to fix it, and so now it's fixed. And now, systemically, he knows where to be on the lookout so it doesn't occur again, okay? And then, lastly, and then we can kind of look at a summary of the numbers, and I think there's still probably some work going on there, but in terms of capital projects and bond pools, and that was part of, that was part of the cash overdrafts, that was part of the fund deficit issues, all of those things were contributing to really not good systems to track, here's a bond pool, here the capital projects, let's match them up, let's get our accounting system to do the work of identifying what we have and where we have it and when we have it. And that was a real, another really big initiative this year that Keith has worked on, and we saw a lot of improvement there. So, you know, as I said, all of that is not part and parcel in here. It is if you really analyze the numbers, and it have been for several years. Look at her, shake her head, yes.
She's looking at me.
You will see those differences. You will see those differences. But, but I really did kind of wanna highlight some of those things, and I really think the city's on a track that it hasn't been on, you know, for a long time, in terms of real financial management linking to financial transactions. Couple other areas to work on, but huge strides this year. So let's kind of look at the overall audit results, if you do have the audit. I do wanna highlight a few of the statements, I won't go every single page, but if you look at page number two, of course, page number two, three, and four represent the independent auditor's report. Oh, do you not have a...
She's already closed her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I closed.
Well, if you, if you can probably follow along if...
You're welcome. See, I've done...
I'll try to just say it, you know, in such a manner that if you don't have it in front of you, and I know you're recording as well, but if you look at pages two, three, and four, this is the overall auditor's report. And of course, we report on the financial statements of the city, and the financial statements of the city include a full accrual or an entity-wide perspective, a modified accrual or a fund-level perspective. And so we opine on the fair presentation of all of that. Most important to you is on the top of page three, which is the opinions paragraph. And the opinions paragraph concludes that as independent auditors, we feel the financial statements of the city are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, okay? So, we had no, well, we had, I think, one adjustment this year that was material enough to need to be posted, down from, I think back in the early days, we used to count how many, because we, we could, that was one of our goals, get the number of adjustments down. So this year, again, that just kind of overall contributes to the financial preparedness of finance. But, so we did have, as I said, we had one adjustment, but that was posted, it was agreed to by management, and your opinion is clean as it relates to your financial statements. There are no new accounting pronouncements this year, as you know, the past couple of years, there's been new accounting pronouncements every year. Next year will be a new accounting pronouncement, which will go into effect and will affect the city, and that is, has to do with your pensions. I think we may have touched on that before.
OPEB.
Well, the OPEB, OPEB is partially in now, the next is going to be your pension, as you know, you participate with the state pension trust fund. But you participate in that pool, so to the extent that that pool may be underfunded, and underfunded under the new GASB requirements, they have to redo their valuations, you are gonna have to pick up your piece of any unfunded liability. So that's going to be, that'll be a big change next year, just FYI. OPEB, we've started to implement, it will be 100% after the pension goes in, the newest standard deals with post-employment benefits. So that's going to be some tremendously different information for you. And I'm not really sure right now where the state of Maryland, where the trust fund stands on getting their valuations done, they're supposed to be doing them this year, so we'll see how that pans out. And hopefully during the year, we'll be in contact a little bit more with Keith, because we are very much aware of that change and the impact it's gonna have for everyone. Going beyond that, page five, and I'm not gonna go through the management's discussion and analysis, but page five to 11 is management's discussion and analysis. Okay, this is required supplementary information. It's management's requirement to prepare this, it's their requirement, there's nine things that if they exist must be included here, but you're not allowed to include anything else, okay? So what we do as your auditors is we make sure that anything that's presented here meets the requirements, and that number two, any numbers presented here are summaries of what's in the audited financial statements, so that it is a cohesive document. So if you read this and don't look at anything else, these numbers, you can rest assured, agree to your audited financial statements, okay? So we can skip that and go to page 12. So I'm just gonna spend a minute on the full accrual statements, page 12 is the full accrual. So this is, you know, if you were business and someone was looking at your balance sheet, this is where they would look, they would look at page 12. You've got two types of activities, governmental, which is general fund, capital projects funds, all those types of things, grant funds. Business type are your enterprise funds, water, sewer predominantly. So in looking at this statement, probably the key thing to look at is your net position. So again, if someone was valuing you like a company, they would say, "Well, your governmental activities, your total net position," and this is like first column next to last number, "is $28.5 million." For your business-type activities, your net position is $87.4 million. Now, a lot of that is because in your business-type activities, you have a lot of restricted dollars, because you have a lot of projects going on, right? And so you've got, you've got bond money that's restricted to specific projects. You've also got about $60 million invested in capital, in infrastructure, in systems. So really, of that total equity position, about $8 million is really your retained earnings, if you will, taking those other pieces out. In the governmental activities, you do notice that the unrestricted is negative, so it's negative 2.5. The biggest reason for that is, going back to OPEB, because we've partially implemented. If you go up about four or five more lines, and there's a number there under non-current liabilities, post-employment benefits, it's $14 million. So, you know, that, that represents benefits you've promised to people if they stay here and leave here, you know, post-employment, and that's really kind of driving that deficit. It's not something you're required to fund, but it does have an impact on your overall financial condition, okay? So that's kind of from a full accrual perspective, something to just kind of take note of.
Not something we're currently...
Yeah, that one's big, and that's really not the total liability. When they put this in, it was so big for so many governments that they said, "Every year, you just have to pick up another year's work." But sooner or later, you're gonna get to the total liability, yeah. It's substantial, yeah, really, it's any or worse.
Long after I'm gone. Okay.
And we probably should say we're not currently required to fund.
Yeah.
You're not, good point.
So we could be required to account for that in future years.
You're not required to fund that, yeah. I mean, you know, that's...
Understood.
Okay. But now, let's, I'd like to switch focus now, though, to kind of your fund-level perspective. So for those of you following, I'm gonna get you really confused, I'm gonna start with the general fund. But to do that, I think it's, it's most meaningful to look at the budget statement. So if I can get you to go to page 48, if you can skip to that page. So page 48, this is the budget statement for the general fund, okay? So now, we're not full accrual anymore, this is more what you are used to seeing in terms of financial reporting. So when you look at page 48, this begins with your revenue position, okay? So your, your tax revenue came in better than anticipated by $629,000. Other revenue came in better than anticipated. At the top of page 49, charges for services came in just about what was anticipated, you budgeted $2,871,000, came in at $2,875,000. I think that, I'm not sure you can get any closer than that on the budget. Other sources, your current surplus, that's of course not actual revenue, that's anything left over from last year that you anticipated using. But taking that into consideration, when you get at the bottom, your total revenues, budgeted at 33.8, came in at 32.3, or better than expected, really, because even though it shows a negative 1.5, you anticipated using $2 million, and you didn't use all of that, right? So it really came in better than expected on the budget revenue side. When we move forward to expenditures, let's kind of go to the total page, 'cause there's a lot of detail here. Your total expenditures, I probably could've used the summary page. Your total expenditures are gonna be on page 54. So on page 54, when you look at your total expenditures, the budget for your total expenditures, your final budget, was $35.6 million. Your actual came in at $32.4 million. So you actually had a favorable variance there of $3.3 million, okay? So overall, you know, good results for the general fund. Now, what that means for the general fund, the net results, now I'm gonna ask you to come back to page 16, and we're just gonna look at the actual numbers for the...
16.
16, if you can go to page 16. 16 is just, forget the budget for a second, just the actual. So when you go to page 16, your total, there's your total revenues again, at $32 million, not taking into account what you were gonna use from surplus, right? 'Cause that was just a budget, that wasn't actual. Your actual expenditures were $32.2 million, so you fell short slightly by $149,000. So out of a 32, almost $32.1 million, you came in with a $91,000. So your fund balance increased from 11, or excuse me, decreased ever so slightly from $11,980 to $11,889. So pretty close to, you know, and I think some of the things I said earlier about building the financial statements, really digging into, and that's where I think you're really getting financial oversight, because, you know, understanding the theory and digging into your numbers gives you better tools to manage where you are at any given point in time. And I think you're seeing that when you're looking at this results.
I'm just curious, how are those tools being used operationally? Because it sounds like they're, you know, having a strong influence on how money's spent.
Right.
How are they used operationally? So how are they distributed, once generated? How do they make their way, you know, to other, you know, to the department heads, to the decision-makers, to you? And how do you use those tools? Just the synopsis, if you could.
Mr. Cordred. Well, budget, if we're talking about budget, so she was just generally...
I'm talking about the...
That was a very broad stroke, I think.
Right, but I'm talking about the reports, how has that, if that's the change in the last 12 months, how, how does that equip you and the department heads to make different decisions, you know, on a daily basis on that?
The budget resources that we had were one of the stronger features of the system that we have, and they've been in place and haven't really been enhanced in a great deal, that our staff, meaning our department heads, and all of their resources do a great job of managing their own budgets, you know, to make sure that, we finance, make sure you can't exceed your budget.
Sure.
But, but those resources have been in place.
Okay. But what I'm hearing is in the last year, it sounds to me, between the last audit and this audit, there's more information being generated.
Right.
I think it's more, if, from my perspective, some of those things, just to reflect on some of the things that I was saying, so here's, here's how that's benefited. As Keith says, you have a great accounting system, and you had a lot of things put into place, which, which were put in place to, you know, have checks and balances, and those things were good from a control standpoint. Where this has really become more beneficial, I think, is, so for example, Keith has been more involved with saying, "Okay, here's where our budget," everybody knows their budget, everybody knows how to control their budget. However, when you go to make a decision, department head, now, when I see and looking at the numbers, what you're doing, I now get the other pieces. I know that grant management might be laying onto that. I know where we stand with capital projects might be layering onto that. And so it's the interaction, his analysis of what your system is doing that's making the difference. It's just providing more information for him to make informed decisions or to give information. I don't think a department head is necessarily saying, "Well, I have a new report now." But when they go to make a decision or to, or to make a request, they now have the power of someone who knows how all of this interacts, and they can say, "Well, here's what that's going to mean in three other places."
One very specific place is we had a very weak remaining proceed analysis reporting provision, and so it generally gave you at some point in time, generally, but it wasn't sure 110%, and we've tightened that up where that those analysis reports are now reconciled so that the costs are reconciled to the GL, so it's accurate, you know. And when you're looking at what you can do with proceeds, you need, you need that to be locked in tight.
Correct.
And so, and then, and you need to make sure those pools, the sum of all those pools, if you're looking at a report, that the money actually, you know, reconciles to those reports. So tying all, yeah, tying all that together is, is very important, so...
So I really think the benefit has really been, is, you know, I think, think that the, the average, you know, or the person that's utilizing some of the checks and balances that have always been there, the procedures that they knew about, that they can still continue business as usual. Well, you have an addition, though, is you have someone who's really analyzing at a higher level and using these systems to help them make informed decisions, you know, and I think that's probably the better. That's the part why I said, "You've gone so far and you don't directly see it," because it's, it's what's happening within, you know, that department.
Well, I noticed in our financial statements that we got, our quarterings, they were much more relatable and comprehensive than what we used to get.
Right.
Having gotten to go through them, I think we got them Friday, Tuesday, Wednesday, something like that, just recently, but, yeah, I mean, if a department head, for instance, Jake, has given their budget, say, "These are the expense lines that we have," and they can just spend to those limits, that doesn't take into account that maybe the revenues aren't coming, meeting up to what they're...
Right.
Now, when they pull a report, they're saying, "Oh, wait, my expenditures are down, but so are my revenues, so I can't, maybe I shouldn't go spend all that extra, you know, just 'cause it's in the line doesn't mean I should spend it."
Right, right.
That's good.
So while we're on that page 16, just to kind of round out a little bit, the capital projects fund, improvements fund, rather, is there as well. So the capital improvements fund had some revenue come in, as you know, you're building, had some money come in to help with the new zoo building. And then you had capital outlays in accordance with your capital plan of $2.1 million, and then some debt money that came in of $3.1. So the capital improvements fund, you know, did, did add to their fund balance at the end of the year, but that's planned, okay? And that's for projects, and as Keith said, and as we mentioned earlier, one of the big changes this year has been, again, it's a little behind the scenes, but now every, every new resource of funding is matched with the project that it's intended to be spent for. There's, there's a much better accounting there. Switching gears, then, to the enterprise funds for a minute, if you go to page 19. Okay, so 19, so for you, that's mostly the water and sewer fund. So when we look at page 19, the water and sewer fund had operating revenues of $16.1 million, operating expenses before depreciation, not, not taking depreciation into account, operating expenses of 9.8, and then you had depreciation of 1.3. So you had an operating income in the water and sewer fund of $5 million, and then you had interest expense because you've got outstanding debt. So your change in net position was $4.1 million, okay? So I know you've got major projects going on there, and that, the face of that, that whole operation's going to be changing, but better to be in the position that you're in financially now with that fund, you know, than to have to be doing that major capital project with a fund that's suffering, you know what I mean? So that, so that's a good thing, that's a good thing. So I know that's a brief overview of the statements, I'm happy to, if you have a question and want me to take you somewhere, let me know. Aside from that, just kind of continuing through, the footnote start on page 23. Again, as I mentioned, there's no new, there were no new accounting principles, so your footnote should be fairly consistent with the prior years. The one change that we did make this year is on page 35. If any of you ever tried to take the bond footnotes and tie them all back in, we kind of switched it up a little bit this year, because I was tired of trying to get all those dollars, chasing them, so we kind of laid it out so they tie a little bit cleaner, even though they always did tie out. But that's probably the only change in the footnotes, was just to make that a little bit, a little bit cleaner. I did wanna talk a minute about, if you go to page 43, just to once again talk about OPEB. So when we looked on that statement of net position, the full accrual statement, and we looked at that OPEB number, it was huge, and I said, "Well, that's not even all of it." Well, all of it is in the table on the bottom of page 43. So right now, you've booked a total of $17.6 million, but if you booked the whole liability, it would be double that, it would be about $32 million. So when that does kick in, that's going to be a significant hit. And then, on top of that, we don't really know what's gonna happen with the pension. And I don't really know the status of the Maryland pension system to know.
They've sent us a letter.
Have they, given you some indication?
They're gonna do it as a, you know, they're acting compliance.
Right.
And they've given us a model on what the report would look like, but it's just an example, nothing, no, no, no clues or any predictions at this time as to what it would look like.
Yeah, that's gonna be, everybody's holding their breath for that to happen, but you're all in the same situation, so. Fortunately for you, you don't have to be explaining yourself to Moody's and S&amp;P when those numbers come out, you do have the benefit of the statewide, you know, bond pool. So, any other questions? I know it's a big report, tried to kind of give you, we do wanna talk about, a little bit more about the single audit, which has the findings in it, and we always kind of touch base on those.
Yeah, let's go through that.
Okay, go through the single audit.
Are there questions before?
I just have two questions.
Sure.
One about the P-card, this is something that's been going on, ongoing for quite a while.
Oh, with the, you're going with the card, right.
The comment and the program, both. My question is, are we likely to make any headway, or do we just get rid of the card and the comment with it? If we can't get past the point where everybody has their own card and we get rid of this comment because there's accountability, do we just get rid of the one card and how do we deal with that?
My understanding is the programs develop.
The current plan is, is that we intend to move forward with the P-cards system, and we've made some pretty big steps during this year, and this aren't visible, but our procurement department got heavily involved in some significant RIT activity. We had a parking administrator had hip surgery, and was recovering from another surgery, so we had some turnover in personnel in other places in that department, and it's just all had a toll on the P-card implementation and all that.
Oh, I mean, I understand, things happen, and, but that's been the story, and I'm just wondering, is it worth keeping that one?
Our intentions are, yeah, we're still, we're still moving.
Or is it actually happening?
Yeah, and I think the re, yeah, that's a good point, actually. And I think the reason that we kind of left it status quo this year was, last year was probably the first real year we had a chance, you know, to work with Keith and to really talk about that, and to give him a chance to go back and look at maybe some different options, which I think he had, had intentions and still has intentions to do. So that's kind of why we left it, because otherwise, we would've just been like, you know, "Look, management has reviewed it, they're going to stay with it, they're happy with it, they're done with it, leave it alone," and then we would say, "Okay." Because that's just in your management letter, just kind of recommendations. But I think until he really has a chance to kind of go through and decide really what's best all the way around, that's kind of why it's sitting there. So to answer your question, don't think it's something that needs to sit there forever, but I think maybe one more year, you know, we can kind of revisit it.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if it was still moving forward, if it was just kind of abandoned or where we were, so.
Right.
And the other one was... And the other one was, um, there was some discussion and, and I know you've got your plate full and this is, I'm just asking if it's still in the realm of possibilities. There was discussion about, um, trying to do a CAFR, oh, that's next year, next year. Okay.
I think he's going to do that next year, just, you know, he did such a good job this year. I'm not going to let him just rest on his laurels and say, hey, that was a good job. So now, now.
We have, we, we have a, we are building in the financial health when we did that, we, we're, we're using that as an opportunity to. You saw we did some graphics because that'll be a step, a set, a piece of it.
Hugely helpful issue.
And, and we're, we're adding, uh, uh, each, we're getting, trying to get to ten, the number of years that some of the schedules, you know, require. So we're up to like eight. So it might be, maybe in two years. But, uh, you know, we're trying to manage some other goals that we have too.
Yeah.
And, and so, but we, we're, as we build this information, we're trying to take steps that will get us there.
And I shouldn't use acronyms, comprehensive annual financial report. Sorry.
And you know, I, I've brought that up, you know, before, um, and big, and I am a big supporter of that. I have to say the way that, the way the process and the way some of the, the functions and the systems have been analyzed, I think is, is the best way to go. And I think that when, when Keith does get to that point, it's not going to be as big as an undertaking as it would have been. Because he's broken it down into pieces and I think.
All the information's there.
Yeah, yeah, but you definitely, you know, go, should be able to get there.
Thank you.
Definitely. Um, so if you, if you got the single audit report, just to touch base on the, the findings. Um, page ten starts with the status of prior years. And of course, some of these, we like to touch on these because some of them, you know, are no longer applicable. I always like to be able to, to point that out. And I did kind of highlight some at the beginning. Uh, the fund deficit issue is gone. We're, that's, that's over now. The only one is the one that we all know is an accounting anomaly more than it is a, a management issue. So the fund deficit, uh, recommendation and finding is, is no longer, uh, applicable. It's, it's been taken care of. In terms of the grant management, this is one of the initiatives that again is a big project. It sounds like, oh, well, let's just kind of straighten that out, but it really is big because it's not just a finance or finance department issue. Grants management is really so much bigger, you know, I mean, Keith can build statements, Keith can build information, he can push information out. But to truly manage grants, uh, you know, they all start a life somewhere outside of finance. And so what really needs to happen is, you know, I think Keith can put in place financial reporting. But I think you still need that, whether it's a grant administrator, whether it's a different, whether it's, you know, I think, I think the city manager's office does some of that. You know, and has been done doing some of that, to really identify what grants are in the pipeline. Where, you know, who are we looking for grant money from? When do we get the award? You know, is it a press release? Is it information to you? It's, it starts a life somewhere else. The finances are the afterthought, but what's, but we just don't have that all cohesive yet. Um, you know, so that, that really is something that I think is going to bring the finance department kind of outside of just that department. And have to really engage more people. Um, so that, that is something, I think it's probably one of the bigger initiatives that still, uh, needs a little attention.
Well, that answers a question that, that I've had for a long time about the, the industry recommended strategy.
Sure.
For, for managing grants, because I could certainly see an argument for wanting it to be broken down to the, um, department level. So that the subject matter expert is having a managerial role, but I also see the alternative and it, it answers the question. So it seems to me that that centralized grant management is the ideal scenario. Is that, is that what you're recommending?
Well, I think for the types of grants that the city has and for the way we've understood different processes to work here. Um, yeah, there's a lot to be said for some of the really talented people you have at the department level. Who know their contacts, they know, you know, where to find a new grant source even. That really should, they should continue to do that, but there, but that's could be different in four different departments. Um, so there needs to be that person and for a lot of reasons, you know, so let's say that someone's going after a grant and they need. I don't know, the cloud of the city, the cloud of another department or something there. If there's that one person that kind of just can funnel that. They don't have to write the grants. They don't have to go get the grants.
It's more oversight.
But it's oversight. They really know. And so then when there's a new grant, they know it. There's a new grant. This, this department needs to know, this person needs to know. Finance is in that loop now. They just need to get in the loop to start to track.
Tracking, reporting requirements, tracking, application deadlines, track.
Right, right.
But I think we're going to be able to accomplish a lot of that by using the grant management component within Munis, which is something we've not been using in the past. And Keith is working on getting us there. And I realize it's more than just an accounting activity. But that in and of itself is going to help us understand when we need to submit reimbursement. So once again, Keith is heading us down the right path.
Good.
And he's done a lot of very good things in a very short time.
Yeah, I think, I think that's definitely getting you on the right track. Um, capital asset tracking, again, that whole project that went on, on this year with getting capital projects tracked and getting bonds tracked, you know. It, 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 you know, it, it got there. It's there. It's really good. I think next year we're going to be like, you know, have everything completely nailed down. You know, but there are little tweaks here and there, you know, a couple of things that came out as we were doing some of the capital asset looking, um, this year. And again, it's that crossover between, well, we'll rely on the spreadsheets one more year, but we've got everything else built. So, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna come to fruition. Um, I mentioned when we talked about the opinion, the accounts payable issue on page twelve. I talked about the fact that we did have a material adjustment. Um, unfortunately, you know, when, 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 when you're doing an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, which we are. When you have a material adjustment, you, you need to identify that and report that out, and that's what that's about. But Keith is already, when I got here tonight, has already said, well, here's how our procedure's going to change. And he's already got that. He's already brought his team in. He's already talked to them about it. So I think they have a, a, a response to that. Um.
And that's a service, one, one invoice that went to fifteen, uh, earned the right, should have been recorded at fourteen.
Okay.
Right, right.
Just, we got somebody now that.
What was the amount of that invoice?
Couple hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
But it was.
Right. Otherwise we would have just waived the entry. But, but I think in, when we found it, it just kind of generate the discussion of, oh, maybe we need to tweak our procedure. And that's, and that gave them the opportunity to do that.
Now someone will sign off on each invoice that is paid in those sixty day window. And make sure that if, if it's material of a certain amount, then that they sign off that it belongs in the, in the period that the department assigned it to.
Okay.
So it, it was another symptom of, that identified a, a.
It needs some oversight so that the department heads alone didn't choose.
Right.
And that there's someone that's signing off on each decision as made. So two heads are better than one. Plus the finance department knows more, uh, decide more, is more intimate with the criteria that is used to determine what year issue going.
Thank you.
Um, and then for your federal programs testing, okay, so this year we tested the, uh, assistance to firefighters, the safer grant. Uh, that was like eight hundred and almost nine hundred thousand dollars you spent this year under that grant. Uh, and we did have, uh, a finding related to reporting. So there again, it just kind of goes to that. You know, there's no master ticker file. There's nobody and, and, you know, finance is doing what they can when they know something has to be done. But they, they don't always know all of these grants and they don't read all the grant agreements. And so, you know, that's kind of, um, you know.
Elite reporting of a, a request for reimbursement or?
No, the, the.
No, just like the financial, yeah.
Required quarterly performance report.
Right, right.
Is not submitted on time. Thirty-two days late.
Ten minutes.
Thirty, no, I'm sorry, two days late.
Two days late.
Thirty-two days after the period.
And then there was another.
Two days later than required.
Right. And then there was a report that was supposed to be submitted quarterly, but there was a miscommunication. They were, they're reporting it, but semiannually, you know, so. And unfortunately, a lot of these, you know, when you're talking about federal funds and you're at the local level. So what happens is the federal agency passes that money to a state agency and the state agency passes it to you. And we are the independent auditors and we have to follow the rules of the federal agency because that's what they expect us to do and they write the rules. Well, when you don't have a state agency that says, hey, we're holding you accountable to the federal rules. Then that's why the federal government says independent auditor, when you're auditing at the local level, make sure they read and understand the requirements and that they do it. And not rely on that, that, uh, state agency to correct them if they're doing it wrong. That's just a fact. It's not just one department. That's just kind of the way it flows. So.
And almost every grant has a different recording.
They're all going to be different, yes, because those federal agencies all write their own rules and, you know, they, they need to feel like they can write their own rules. So they're gonna, there's not one size fits all. There are some good changes. I will say though, on that topic, there are some good changes coming with federal audit requirements, uh, and accountability. Number one, the threshold for a federal single audit is moving from five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand. You're usually over that anyway, but just FYI, so in two years, those new requirements will go into place. They also, the federal requirements, they are streamlining some of the things like, can we be more consistent? You know, if we all want to see the same things, we don't all have to write our own circular. Can we pull it all together? And so there's a new, it's called the super circular and, uh, it's out, but it doesn't go into effect for you until your sixteen audit. Uh, but it will have some impact, you know, and hopefully some positive impact. Okay. Any questions?
Any other questions?
Well, it sounds to me like, um, you know, Mr. Corddry and his staff deserve a, you know, round of applause for everything that they've done. To improve conditions, you know.
They have.
At least in the short time period that I've been here and certainly since you've been on board, uh, helping to guide us. So thank you.
Thank you.
For your service.
We still have a lot of, you know, plenty of work to do.
Well, but it sounds like it's being done. There's plans for it.
That's good. That's strong security for you. If there wasn't anything left for you to do.
And, and Keith worked well with his staff too. I mean, he really has kind of, you know, they, there, there was so much transition in his position that. You know, they never really got a chance to get firm footing and, and work as a team, you know, and he's really done.
Good staff members, yeah.
They've done good. They really are doing well.
Excellent. Well, thank you for the audit report this evening. Thank you for the, um, improved audit report from my recollection over last year. Uh, but, uh, thank you both. We appreciate it.
We'll see you next week.
Yes, we'll see you then. All right. Uh, the final item on our agenda this evening is the budget amendment for the downtown trolley for council discussion. Um, and I believe we have that drafted in our packet. Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Got the numbers? Super. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Look at the calendar and see what days of the week these were.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, Friday.
Every day.
Thank you.
There's a pattern. Looks like, uh, Thursday, Thursday is pretty popular.
And you got a, you got a chart on the back. Excellent. Yes, I see Friday later over time. Oh, was that when we started the third Friday, ridership? Cause that third Friday jumped up. For a while there, everybody was Thursday night.
Yeah. Saturday doesn't seem to be really.
Popular.
Much of a big deal.
Yeah.
What is your?
Done in by Thursday and Friday perhaps?
Yeah. One of the things we might want to recommend then to, uh, to downtown businesses is, I know they, the downtown businesses have started, have recently banded together. Maybe we can communicate this to Ms. Kordakowski, is, uh, to recommend that, um, in their, uh, marketing, they look at Saturday night. I know they've decided on Thursday night, but there's already a influx of people on Thursday night.
Well, that's on the trolley. I mean, I don't know what, they may already be busy enough. They don't need to promote.
Let me rephrase. There's a, there's a particular business that makes a big deal about Thursday, college night.
Yeah, I know. But I'm saying Saturday, they might be busy enough from other traffic than not need to advertise to the students.
Perhaps.
Where Thursday night people have to get up and go to work the next morning, maybe not have late classes, um, don't partake as much. I want to get back to the.
So, so ridership doubled from August to September and doubled from September to October. And we don't have anything passed the first weekend in November.
And it's a dollar a ride, so.
It's a dollar a ride.
Presumably they've brought in eleven, eleven hundred twenty-five dollars.
Okay. Excellent. Mr. Sheehan, uh, would you like to offer anything from the university's perspective?
Good evening again. Robbie Sheehan, uh, deputy chief of staff and director of government community relations at Salisbury University. On behalf of the university and the administration, I want to thank, uh, the city council and the administration, uh, for their support of the downtown trolley. Uh, the budget amendment, amendment, uh, for the previous fiscal year. And, and actually, I guess this is happening in the same fiscal year as well, just for the second semester. I just want to say thank you so much on behalf of the university. This has been, uh, an awesome opportunity for our students. It has certainly helped our safe ride operations as well, um, in providing a way for our students to get downtown, to get to different businesses, to go out to dinner. Uh, to Brew River, um, and different, uh, businesses downtown, uh, for whatever they do on Thursday nights and Friday nights. Uh, so we really appreciate the safety aspect and the support that the, uh, city has given the university in that regard. So just want to say thank you so much. And if there's anything we can do to continue supporting this partnership, um, let us know.
Well, I have a question.
Thank you.
I'd like to know what, um, we were given the coasters tonight that are going to go home. I noticed the schedule on the back. Nice.
Um. That was a good idea.
Yeah. Was that your idea?
No, no, was that, was that Blair Carey's?
Uh, Laura Kordakowski.
Laura, okay.
Yeah. Um, what is the university doing to, in terms of promotion on this? Because I've talked to a number of students who are like, trolley? What trolley? I don't see anything on campus about that. So I'm, I'm just wondering what, what is going on there?
Yeah, I know that Jake and Laura and a number of students have been plastering the campus with posters and all kinds of different signage and flyers. Um, the unfortunate thing is we have a number of students who are just totally, you know, out of the loop. And, and the students that are involved in student government activities, we're pushing it through our different student organizations. Um, they're aware and they're active. It's just those apathetic students that we're still trying to reach.
I'm wondering like emails on Thursday morning.
That's a great idea.
Uh, to campus wide emails. Hey, here's a trolley scheduled for this week, Thursday, Friday, whatever. Simple things like that, that, that don't cost money, cost a few minutes of somebody's time, but you can do it once and set it up on a schedule.
Right.
To send automatically. So, um, things like that, because most of them do read their email.
Wow. We're challenged in that regard as well.
Yeah, well.
It's the same kids that are parking over on Wayne Street.
Well, that's only forty of them that you have to read then.
True, true. The carpool.
The other thing, uh, that's, uh, worth mentioning is I think Ms. Kordakowski had a table at the.
Yes, so we've involved her in all of our transfer student orientations, our survival of arrival. Um, just trying to make her presence known on campus and getting the information out that way as well. Yeah, she's been really incredibly proactive.
Well, just one more tidbit with the emails. If you were to send those out, that might be an opportunity to get some buy-in. And I mean that in a literal sense, from the businesses that are benefiting from that, that they would, uh, basically do some paid advertising. And maybe the emails come from us to university students or that we create them or whatever. And they get sent through your system, uh, so that people know about it. But that, they're basically buying ads on there to help fund this.
Right. And that was, uh, buying advertising was something that Short Transit said they do when they agreed to partner with us on this. And it was something that we had, council sent like five or six things that we wanted to see when we funded this. And one of them was advertising for downtown businesses on the, on the trolley. Uh, the other things that we said we wanted to see, um, that haven't all been done, um, but are included. Uh, and the reason this was six, uh, twenty-one, not sixteen, was permanent signage. Uh, which is something that I think is needed at the stops. Um, and then painting the trolley, which was something we asked.
And that, and that's something that we're in discussion about as well.
You're in discussion with Short Transit?
With the university, yeah, internally.
Okay, excellent.
I'd also like to offer that, that perhaps the idea of getting some better external lighting on that thing. You know, something that's more attractive. I was there the other day and, you know, it's lighted from the inside, but it's sort of like a ghost as it goes by. Um, maybe some rope lights on the exterior or something of the sort.
Ring bell now.
I was in Cape May this, I was in Cape May this weekend for my anniversary. There were, uh, there was a little trolley. There's a Cape May trolley that goes around, circulator, same exact thing, uh, but it's got, uh, like the Christmas rope lights around the top. It's, yeah, in the holidays at least.
Right. And I think maybe some lighting on the advertising on the side would be good for the advertisers as well.
That's great.
One, let me eyeball here. I think that, um, I look at all this and it seems that. I think that, I look at all this, and it seems that we're doing it seven P M. to two A M. And to me, that we're promoting alcohol to students, because that's where they're going. And it's a safe ride, but by me being familiar with what goes on at Brew River, it doesn't complement the neighborhood. They get drunk, there's several, and it's not reported, I get this constantly. For example, Dennis had four hundred police calls. If you got the police calls, actual police calls at Brew River, you would be disturbed. And all I see this is to get the students downtown to drink. And I think, me as a city council person, a parent who has two, two students, I don't want them to go to a station to get drunk. I think we talk about alcoholism, drug addiction, because not only do they get alcohol, they're getting drugs also. And I think as a person, to me, if downtown, where are other stores? How do other stores benefiting for this, the hour that this trolley is being circulated? I just, I don't support something like this. I didn't realize, you know, when you're thinking and you hear about the police calls from young college students, other young people within the community. We're really literally promoting drinking alcohol and giving them a safe way back home after they get drunk. And I don't think that, and then when I hear the previous firefighters and their dilemma, I couldn't support funding something like this as a parent and grandparent, because I don't think parents send their children to college to get drunk. And that's what, it seems to me that we're supporting as a city, yes, we want more kids to come downtown, but we also want the hours, if it was more hours, you know, like if I saw twelve to two A M. or something where other people could really ride the, the trolley, other people in the public.
Well, that's an interesting point.
You, you know, it's, because you got the hours at seven P M., most kids come out, most young people come out at nine ten. So, in between there, most of the time, the stores might be closed at seven P M., you see what I'm saying?
That's a fair point.
So, so, so I, I think you have to be careful what we promote, when we want to promote downtown. Do we want it to be a, a, a sidewalk full of drunk college kids? Or do we want it to be responsible adults also that want to go downtown and shop or what, in the other stores? Everybody does want to, now, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying not do it, but I can't support the timeframe and I can't support the money because of what we're going through with the, the fire department.
I understand, I understand.
Mr. Sheehan, did you have some?
Yeah, Councilwoman Shields, I think that's an incredibly fair point. You know, we, we inundate our students with alcohol abuse education, you know, our hope is that they drink responsibly, that they don't abuse alcohol, and, and honestly, I mean, our students, they, they were finding a way downtown anyway, without the trolley beforehand, and they were getting, you know, robbed on the way back. And so, we initiated our safe ride service, and so, they had been picking up a lot of the slack and trying to cart these students back and forth. And the, the trolley, we had this conversation a number of times about what should the hours be? Because we don't want the perception to be that we're just catering to the, the specific demographic. And, and maybe it's a conversation that we revisit, Jake, I mean.
Yeah, and, and one of the things that's worth mentioning here is several downtown business owners have requested earlier hours in addition to, they want the dinner hour to be included, the five to seven. We just have to, we'd have to talk about, are we willing to add, to pay more money?
And I want to know, why do we have to pay more money? Why do we have to put the money in?
Well, because it's a city project, we don't have to, if we don't want to, but it's, no, no one was doing it and, and no one will ever do it.
I, I had a feeling that this might come up, and, and there are conversations going on at the university about, you know, the possibility of providing support in the future for this project, because we really appreciate this. You know, we've got our hiring freeze right now, we're expecting cuts, you know, that conversation's going on, but we really appreciate the service.
I think that's an incredible gesture, and if we could partner, I mean, right now, it's a partnership, you know, between Shore Transit and Salisbury. And the city of Salisbury, because, you know, Shore Transit's providing the capital, they provide us with a bus. But this is, you know, this is not subsidizing the consumption of alcohol, this is subsidizing public transit. This is public transit.
Right.
You know, if, if, if we don't do it, nobody's gonna do it.
And getting people downtown, I mean, that's what it's all about.
If a private business wants to do it, let them do it, but you know what I can promise you?
I was out of the loop, I, I remember when it first came, you know, I had surgery and stuff. But I understand perfectly what you're trying to do, but would you do the dinner hour?
Yeah, maybe we pull it back to five or something.
What I can promise you is if we don't do it, no one will, because no one ever did. Until we did it, nobody ever did it. People talked about it for years, and nobody ever did it, but we did it. And here's the other thing, is when you talk about economic development, and this is, this is, you know, people, you know, wanna talk about, you know, it's promoting drinking, it's promoting things like, if you, if you talk about economic development, you have to provide the conduit. You have to also provide that conduit through marketing and through awareness. And one of the things the trolley does, because, you know, I've spoken to probably seven or eight classes of Salisbury University students in the last few months, and the thing I keep hearing every time is, oh, yeah, everybody rides the trolley. Everybody rides the trolley. Not nobody's ridden the trolley, but everybody rides the trolley, yeah? That, over, well over a thousand people, and I've maybe spoken to, you know, a hundred people, well over a thousand.
So, the perception is there, that's good.
Yeah, well, and the perception is there and the reality is there, the numbers are there. So, I, you know, again, I, I think this is, you know, you can, you can't have it both ways. You can have a successful revitalization, you know, and invest in it, or you cannot.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I just think that there, there's, I'm just thinking of more ways that we can do it.
Sure.
I'm glad that you're hearing that, because the perception is, is, it's good, everybody rides it, it's not a problem. It's not like walking downtown or, you know, people, people make comments about, you know, the safety of being downtown, whatever.
Which we know also not to be true.
Right, but, but it's the perception, and, and that's their reality. So, the fact that people are comfortable and like, oh, yeah, everybody rides the trolley, then, then that's a real option to them when they get ready to come down, because what I remember happening and, and would still happen was, the biggest thing that I heard from students, as far as a benefit to them, was that Safe Ride would pick you up and bring you back, but it would not take you down here, it wouldn't bring you down here. So, what they did was drive their car down here, or they'd all pile in somebody's car and drive it down, and then somebody didn't wanna leave the car, so then, somebody's driving it back unsafely. And everybody else is unsafe ride, or they all pile back in, or they, you know, they're walking home or whatever, and that's a problem.
Or they would, I, I would get emails early on in my tenure here, would get emails, people complaining that they got tickets for being responsible.
And leaving their car, right.
Get up earlier and move your car, but, you know, there, there are all sorts of things that, you know, a program like this helps to address. You know, but most importantly of which, in my mind, is the economic development aspect of helping to revitalize and build awareness. And again, create that physical linkage between the university and the hard part.
No, that wasn't.
We have a specific demographic we're looking at here, and that's people between the ages of twenty-one and, what, twenty-four, essentially. Now, if we're gonna be opening earlier, it's not my, my experience that, that college students tend to spend much money in restaurants. It's mostly for alcohol. Should we have, give me a moment, should we have extended hours or expanded hours, which would include going down to, to five o'clock in the afternoon? I would like to see the, another demographic be considered, and that'd be us. You know, folks who wanna come for an earlier dinner and wanna catch the trolley. And, you know, a, a route that includes not just university spots, but, but neighborhood spots as well.
Which was what was originally proposed, and there was clamoring that the Camden neighborhood would be very, very opposed and would resist any attempt to provide any trolleys.
We're gonna have a stop in front of the community of joy.
Yeah, and there was resistance from our neighborhood.
Well, plus it added to the travel time, the loop time, because we only have one trolley.
It did, but you could, you could remove other stops.
Other stops, right.
You know, require people to walk a little bit. The, the concern, I think, from the neighborhood was people making noise when they got out of the, got off of the trolley.
Well, I mean, we could, we could eliminate that one stop, you know, at X.
At a certain time.
Time period, you know, no later than nine o'clock. You know, folks like us, Chaney, I'll take it to us, okay? You and I are back at home by nine o'clock, okay? And our feet are up and we're watching TV or whatever the case is.
Nobody wants it in their backyard.
You know, Ben Bound was one of the first people who, you know, Cune's Jewelers, you know, lives in the neighborhood, lives in our neighborhood, and said, you know, oh, I rode it immediately, you know, walked over to Salisbury University. But that's kind of a long walk, that's half a mile or so.
But I think that there should be something along the lines, if we wanna get to that demographic, then the, you know, the five o'clock crowd needs to have a little break with maybe the price of the dinner, you know, early bird specials.
Trolley special, ten percent off if you rode the trolley, like you, like they do if you rode your bike in.
I don't know if everyone remembers, but that was actually one of the things we included in our message to Shore Transit, was that, you know, communication of specials for having ridden the trolley was.
What are any of the businesses doing?
Well, it was one of the things that we asked them to work on.
You know, the fiscal, the fiscal responsibility here, and, and Robbie, I, I would love to see the university jump in with that sooner than later, okay, with a little funding. I would like to see this thing stand on its own two feet, that's, that's the bottom line. You know, eventually for this to be a minimal expenditure on, on the city's part. We looked at twenty thousand dollars a few years ago for other things and said, well, that's a big deal, it's a big deal, it's a big deal. Well, it kind of is a big deal. You know, if I had twenty thousand dollars, I don't know if I'd spend it on this, but I can see from the city's perspective and the downtown's perspective that twenty thousand dollars can be well spent in promoting the, the, the health of downtown, the businesses in downtown. And in the end, I wanna see all those people and all those organizations and all those facilities that benefit from this chipping into it and making it self, self-sustaining.
You know, pub, public transit is not self-sustaining, it is, you know, funded by tax dollars, but I do think we could go a long way.
Yeah.
I don't think we'll ever see it stand on its own two feet, you know, no transit system does. And this is not even a transit system, this is one transit route.
Well, this is kind of a specialty transit system.
It's, it's really not, it's a circulator, which is popular across the country, there are lots of these, and they do not sustain themselves. Most of them are free, we've, we decided to charge a dollar. But, you know, what we could do is hope that, one, with the university's partnership, and two, with potential advertising dollars, there's a real opportunity there. You know, I think one of the things we can do is work with Shore Transit to ensure that in next year's budget, you know, if we pull back a little, or if we provide the same amount but ask for more hours to be provided, then we could certainly ask that the, the gap be funded, the gap be met with advertising dollars.
I would like for us to think about whether we keep the Saturday route until the, the Thursday and Friday are, are built up a little more. I, I mean, there are a lot of zeros there, on the best nights, Thursdays, we've got about nine per hour, nine riders per hour. And so, I'm thinking, I know that now these are all printed, we've got the.
Which, by the way, would make it the most popular route in Shore Transit's.
Right, yeah, yeah, I'm just saying Sa- Saturday is really not, not performing at that level, and maybe we need to focus more effort on the Thursday and Friday before we go to Saturday, maybe earlier hours, maybe, you know, and, and try that.
I'm supportive of the five o'clock to seven o'clock addition to Thursday and Friday in lieu of Saturday. I just would be surprised, I mean, if you look at it at seven o'clock, there's nobody on it. And if you look at it at ten o'clock.
That's what I said, I would, I would be really interested to see the hours.
Oh, the hour breakdown.
Probably most of those are ten to two.
So, one of the things that we'd have to do, in talking to Shore Transit, is find out whether or not they're able to change mid-year, change their hours and, you know, before we get signs up or anything like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think they probably would, we just should probably get, you know, get Brad in here at legislative session to talk to us, Brad Bellicico.
Another thing you could think about is a split time, so five to seven, and then nine to two or ten to two.
Yeah.
Because at peak time, most kids are coming, like, it's ten o'clock.
Typically with the circulators, the design is, you know, you, consistency, you know, that I'm gonna be out there, I know I don't have to wait any longer than X number of minutes before.
The other thing, it's a dollar per ride, so if they get off at, at Mojo's and then they wanna get back on and go down to Brew, they gotta pay again.
That's right.
So, are these numbers unique riders, or are they?
I don't know, we'd have to ask, we'd have to ask Shore Transit.
Well, it amounts to thirty-four rides per day of operation average, which is, I'd like to see that tripled, actually, at least.
Which is, again, the most popular route in Shore Transit's entire system.
You're starting almost right.
All right, well, why don't we bring Mr. Bellicico in to address some of these timing questions, the timing issues? Obviously, none of that is included in the budget amendment, it's simply a budget amendment to continue the program. And there's additional funding in there for increased community, in, increased for the signage and the painting and things like that. But, you know, I'd like to move it to legislative session and have Mr. Bellicico come in to talk to us about the programming. Nothing would start until the end of January, anyway, so it would purely be the funding mechanism.
Well, we only have one meeting, one legislative meeting in December, so it's gonna be second week in January before it's even second read. So, we have time to get those answers and, and whatever, so that's, I'm fine with that.
Okay, is that everyone else?
Yeah, I'd absolutely like the public to hear more about what, what the possibilities are and what's being done, yeah.
You, you okay with it coming to legislative session?
Yeah, let's, let's do that for getting it moving.
Chaney?
I just think we need to be careful about the alcohol, because you're saying twenty-one, we know eighteen-year-olds get into Brew River. So, you gotta be careful with that stuff, you know, I know what we're trying to do.
They pass their compliance checks, so.
Well, let's.
We gotta be careful with that, though.
Sure, but, I mean, but let's separate that from the transit system, you know?
I, I, I know, but when you're, when you're, most of the people that are using it right now are kids wanting to drink, that's, that's factual. And when we have, we be inclusive to older people or people within the communities, then I, it's even keel, you see? That's, that's how it is.
I, I will say, as someone who's ridden it, it does not, it's not a party bus. It's not.
No.
You know, it doesn't feel like it, as someone who's ridden it and spent my dollars on it.
What type of ride, ten o'clock?
Yeah, I'm not up that late.
Yeah, I'm right.
It don't become a party bus.
I'm in hell with you at two and three o'clock in the morning, I know better.
That's true, that's true. All right, well, thank you.
Great, thank you.
One, one more item before we go, and bear in mind, we're, we're ahead of schedule. Council meeting dates for 2015, Ms. Nichols has the, the preliminary dates. Kim, let's send those out through email.
Sure.
And everybody weigh in, but you've got that, thank you, Kim. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? All right?
Oh, yes, I do want to say one thing.
Yes, Ms. Shields.
When I talked about the, the police calls, I would like to get the police calls to the establishments, because they're not being reported, and that's the concern of some of the public. They're, you hit, you see the, the, the police calls in the, in the paper, it's not a true picture of the calls. Because if you get four hundred calls in an establishment, that's very serious.
I'm on board with that, too.
And then I think we need to find out what Brew River's calls are, because I know I've did, we did it before, and they receive the most calls.
I have to work with the chief to see if we can extrapolate that data, because it's five, it's five beat, so it depends on.
Beat or not, but they receive four hundred calls. But I'm more interested in the downtown right now, since we're talking about Brew River and Mojo's and Rowdy Joe's. And anything else in that, what else is it, pub, whatever, Irish pub, all the drinking establishments.
Oh, Irish penny.
Whatever it's called.
That's, yeah, out, you know, like the universe.
All right, anything else? All right, we are adjourned.